Yeah, City of Bellevue, regular city council meeting, virtual meeting for May, Monday, June 15th, 2020. Could we do a roll call, please?
Mayor Robinson.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Nguyen House.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
Present.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers On.
Here.
Great, thank you.
Great. So before the approval of the agenda, there's a quick procedure that we need to address. The council has been following a process to allow for communications during the meeting. As a result, there is a provision in the council's procedural rules, Resolution 8928, that the council should temporarily suspend that involves the process for accepting communication for the public. So Section 13 of Resolution 8928 allows a council procedural rule to be temporarily suspended. And when suspension is requested and no objection is offered, as mayor, I may announce the rule suspended. Do we have any objections to that? Okay, hearing none. Deputy Mayor, would you like to make a motion?
Certainly will. I move to suspend until such time as the council is no longer holding its meeting remotely. The provisions in Section 8.D.2 of Resolution 8928 concerning oral communications from the public to all public comment to be provided in writing and read or summarized during the council meeting.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you very much. So we have two proclamations tonight, and I want to thank staff for working with us up until the final minute to get these prepared. The first one is World Elder Abuse Awareness Day proclamation, and we do this every year, and unfortunately, because of our COVID requirements, we can't have the Bellevue Network on Aging representatives come and talk to us first. But having been a member of that group, I'm just really impressed with the work that they continue to do for our city and the awareness they continue to create for all the older adults in our community. Councilmember Robertson, would you please read the proclamation?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas World Elder Abuse Awareness Day was established in 2006 to encourage public awareness and action against elder abuse, and whereas Bellevue's older adults are valued members of our community, and it is our collective responsibility to ensure that they live safely and with dignity. And whereas abuse of older adults is a tragedy inflicted on a growing number of vulnerable populations and crosses all socioeconomic boundaries. And whereas combating abuse of older adults will help improve quality of life and will allow older adults to continue to live as independently as possible. And whereas Bellevue's older adults should be treated with respect and dignity to enable them to continue to serve as leaders, mentors, volunteers, and important and active members of this community. Now therefore, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor, City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim the Monday of June 15th, 2020, as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Bellevue, and urge everyone to commit to building safer communities for our aging residents.
Thank you, councilmember. Our next one is a Juneteenth proclamation. And Friday, June 19th, is a celebratory day of Juneteenth for many African-Americans across the United States, and we believe it's important to honor this day. Through the recognition of Juneteenth, the City of Bellevue recognizes the importance of acknowledging the historical and current struggles of Black and Brown communities, the struggles that have impacted all of us over the past years and current days. And Councilmember Barksdale, would you please read the proclamation?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas through the recognition of Juneteenth, the City of Bellevue recognizes the importance of acknowledging the historical and current struggles of Black and Brown communities, the struggles that have impacted all of us over the past years and current days. Whereas for many of us, we are familiar with the fact that the signage of the Emancipation Proclamation declared slaves in Confederate territory free when it was issued on January 1, 1863. This paved the way for the 13th Amendment abolishing slavery throughout the United States. Whereas Juneteenth is a recognition that many slave owners continued to hold their slaves captive, and it wasn't until almost two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation on June 19, 1865, that Major Granger's announcement in Texas that the Civil War was over and all slaves were freed. Whereas Juneteenth celebrates the recognized and official abolishment of slavery in the United States, that all people, no matter the color, will be and always will be free from the chains of slavery. Today, we must never forget that shameful period in our country's history when all men and women were legally not considered equal but could be rightful property of another person. Whereas our current trials stem from that historical period, and the impact of those bonds and legacies of slavery continues in every form and element of our social fabric today. Whereas honoring Juneteenth is meant to celebrate freedom for the African-American community, we should also continue to reflect, be challenged, and put into action ways that we can commit to equity and justice that supports, builds, and sustains a thriving community.
Now therefore, I, Lynn Robinson, Mayor, the City of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2020, as Juneteenth. In Bellevue, Washington, recognizing its historical importance and calling on our community to join us in listening, reflecting, and acting so that we can finally achieve racial justice for all. Thank you very much. Okay, next we have an approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is approved. Next, we have written communications. City clerk, do we have any to read tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have one communication to read. And if you would like, I will proceed.
Yes, please.
This email came in from Tuli Davenport. I am Tuli Davenport, a Bellevue resident. I recently learned about a peaceful protest organized by Educators for Justice on June 5th, 2020. Their flyer showing a link ended with "defund Bellevue PD," and then she's attached an image. The city posted two pictures of this protest on its Facebook page, and it was shared by Educators for Justice, asking city leaders to heed their demands. Again, another attached image. Councilmembers On and Councilmember Stokes left supportive comments on one of the pictures. Mr. Stokes said it was a civil and on message, and Ms. Son said that she was present at the protest. Another attached image. Mr. Stokes clarified on former Councilmember Wallace's Facebook page that he was not physically present at the protest, and that he supported SRO's presence in schools and BPD in the city. Another attached image. I would like to ask Ms. Son and any other councilmembers who supported the June 5th protest, their position and thoughts on demands for defunding BPD. Seattle councilmembers are currently discussing cutting Seattle Police Department funding by 50%. It would be good for the public to know where Bellevue Council stands on this matter. I would like to thank all the councilmembers for attending and supporting the peaceful protest in the city on important matters of systemic racism and participating in the cleanup efforts after the riots and looting. I personally support BLM and some of the demands of educators of justice, but not defunding BPD and removal of SROs from Bellevue School District schools, especially given the relatively high number of school shootings in our country. Chief Malet is doing a fantastic job, and we are lucky to have officers like Craig Hanami for the youth in our city. The city is safer with BPD supported and fully funded. In addition, the city should find ways to support organizations addressing mental health needs of youth and families through these difficult times. The city's parks, trails, and open spaces have been a blessing to many, thanks to the park staff for keeping them well-maintained and accessible to all during the pandemic. Thank you for reading. And that is the exceptions for this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we go on to the report of the city manager, Mr. Miyake.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson and councilmembers. I have one update under the manager's report tonight, and that is to provide an overview of the pledge signed by the mayor on behalf of the council last week, as well as some next steps after the pledge. For the benefit of the public listening in, the pledge signed by the mayor was related to the police use of force policy, as well as next steps from a community engagement perspective. Both the pledge and next steps were intended, were included in a city press release along with quotes from each councilmember last Thursday, and can be found on the city's webpage. With respect to the pledge, it commits the city to making changes within, or taking a look at changes within four areas on the police use of force. One is to review the police use of force policies. Two is engagement of the community by including a diverse range of input experiences, experiences and stories in the review. Third, reporting the findings of the review to the community and seeking feedback. Fourth, reform if necessary the police use of force policies. As city manager, I will be working with staff to establish an action plan to respond to each of these areas. And the city council and community will be partners in this effort, and we will be bringing back updates along with this process. First, I want to acknowledge a few points about the approach. While most of the national conversation has placed the focus on law enforcement, I want to leave no doubt that Bellevue is committed to looking across the organization in our areas of operations and seeking feedback and making changes. The call to action requires a careful look at our current policies, practices, and culture, and to make appropriate changes. As I noted in a message to city staff last week, systemic racism is very real. It persists because it is entwined in many of our everyday processes and practices. We need to address gaps beyond law enforcement, including health, housing, education, and other services. Second, I want to acknowledge that we are not starting from zero in this journey. The council adopted the Diversity Advantage Plan in 2014, which has a specific section on public safety, and that work has been an ongoing priority for the organization. I want to thank the Bellevue Police Department for their commitment to serving the community. In recent weeks, the police staff's long hours and commitment to protecting all members of the community, including peaceful protesters, has been on full display. Our police department has shown an openness for having these conversations, and we thank the police department for their hard work and dedication to the profession of being a police officer. I also want to recognize Chief Malet for five years of investing in the community, conversations, and building connections. The Bellevue's culture of a continuous improvement make it possible to take this pledge and know that our conversations are listening and taking action will evolve and lead to positive changes. Finally, looking at the details of the pledge, the biggest step at this moment is engagement with the community. This engagement has already begun, and right now, much of it is listening to the various groups speaking out with input in their experiences. We've heard from members of the public, expect more in the coming weeks. The city has also been approached by several leaders within the Black community here in Bellevue. And I'm involved in active conversations on what is the most effective approach to ensure all voices are heard. And from this evolving conversation, I will bring back a more formal set of action to the council for your review, complete with near-term and as well as long-term commitments. Make no mistake, we take this work very seriously, and we are committed to taking meaningful actions to acknowledge and address historical wrongs in our country and local communities while also strengthening the important diversity of work Bellevue is doing right now. Thank you, councilmembers. That's my report.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Miyake. Appreciate that. All right. Next up, we have the consent calendar. Do you have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So approved, or so moved, excuse me?
And a second?
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, it passes. Okay, we're on to our study session items. We have two items here. Mr. Miyake, could you introduce them for us, please?
Sure. The first item on your study session is related to a land use code amendment necessary to allow residents and businesses to keep their federally backed flood insurance premiums. Specifically, staff are seeking council direction to prepare the land use code for public hearing, as well as finding a necessity to keep this at the council level versus sending it over to the planning commission. Joining us this evening are a number of our staff members. Mike Brennan, the director of our Development Services, as well as Trisna Tanis, who is our consulting attorney, and Nick Whitwell, senior planner. With that, I'll turn it over to Mike for additional information and presentation. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Miyake. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Nguyen House, and councilmembers. As Mr. Miyake mentioned, we're here this evening to ask the council to initiate updates to the floodplain regulations that are included in the city's land use code. In February, FEMA notified the city about recently updated flood insurance apps that designate the floodplain that are located within the city along some of our lakes and streams, and also updates to regulations that are part of the National Flood Insurance Program. Next slide. Cities and counties that participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, they're required to update the local regulations by August 19th to maintain eligibility within the National Flood Insurance Program. So we're working on a fairly tight timeline here to meet the state and federal requirements. And so because of that short period, we are asking that the council find, achieve a finding or enter a finding of necessity and retain processing with the city council. Really, the only way I think we can make it to that August 19th timeline, given the steps that we'll discuss here in just a few minutes. So for the specifics on the amendments, the process, and the timeline that we are proposing, I'll pass this to Trisna and Nick, who can share that information. Trisna?
Thanks, Mike. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilmembers, and city manager Miyake. Thanks for having us tonight for this item. I want to begin by going through our agenda for this evening. First, we will be giving, so next slide, please. We will be giving a brief explanation about the floodplain's regulatory framework, and then we'll talk about the objectives of this LUCA, and kind of expanding on what Mike just mentioned about why we're bringing this forward for your consideration at this time. We will follow, provide some highlights of the components of the LUCA. And lastly, we'll provide information on what we plan for public engagement and the steps of the LUCA process. Next slide, please. So this LUCA is a conformance update to the city's Frequently Flooded Areas Regulations. Just to provide some background information on the city's regulations and the land use code. Under the land use code, frequently flooded areas include land subject to 100-year flood, which in other words, land has a 1% or more chance of flooding in any given year. And also areas that are identified on the countywide flood insurance rate maps for firms in the flood insurance study, FIS. You'll see these kind of acronyms repeated throughout our presentation tonight. FEMA periodically updates the firms and the FIS, though the last update was in 1995. The purpose of floodplain regulations at federal, state, and local levels, just like the city's land use code, includes making sure that we identify and delineate those areas that are flood-prone. Of course, this is to make sure that development that is proposed in these areas follow the appropriate standards and regulations. We also want to avoid and minimize damage to life, property, and the environment, and to make sure that we preserve and promote healthy floodplains and biological processes. Next slide, please. So we want to show you a map of the city with the frequently flooded areas delineated. As you can see, Lake Bellevue, Larson Lake, Phantom Lake, Lake Sammamish, and most streams in the city are included. Note that Lake Washington is not included because the Army Corps of Engineers controls the lake levels to less than two feet annually. Next slide, please. So there is a direct relationship between the city's Frequently Flooded Areas Regulations with federal flood insurance. And as such, I want to provide some background information on the federal flood insurance program. This flood insurance program is called the National Flood Insurance Program, or NFIP. You'll see that acronym also mentioned throughout this presentation. The city has participated in the NFIP since December 1, 1978, so it's been quite a number of years. Participation means that Bellevue residents and businesses can obtain NFIP-backed flood insurance. The city also has a Class 5 rating in FEMA's Community Rating System, or CRS. This is a system between 9 and 1. Class 5 rating equals a 25% discount on these federally backed flood insurance. In terms of how this rating system works, a new community that enters into the program starts at a Class 9, or a 5% discount. And as that community engages in mitigation activities, its rating rises in 5% increments. Mitigation activities include public information efforts, such as outreach or providing flood maps, providing educational and other flood-related information, as well as maintaining floodplain maps and corresponding regulations, such as requiring open space and stormwater provisions, or performing flood preparedness activities like levees, dams, or having an early warning capability. In Bellevue, as of April 17th of this year, the NFIP has paid out 65 flood claims totaling over $900,000. We do want to point out, though, that because Bellevue has had an effective floodplain management and regulations, there have only been five claims that are of substantial amounts since 1978. Next slide, please. As I mentioned earlier, FEMA updates the countywide flood insurance maps and flood insurance study periodically. In setting a community's eligibility and rating for the NFIP, so the federally backed flood insurance, FEMA uses the flood insurance maps and this flood insurance study, as well as whether the community's regulations are consistent with federal and state standards. This is the relationship between FEMA, eligibility and rating for the NFIP, the flood insurance maps and flood insurance study, and then the communities, in our case, Bellevue's Frequently Flooded Areas Regulation. As Mike mentioned at the outset, in February, FEMA transmitted to the city new flood insurance maps and flood insurance study. This LUCA is to adopt those new maps and study and conform the city's Frequently Flooded Area Regulations in the land use code to federal and state standards. FEMA has set a deadline of when communities have to adopt these new maps and studies and conform their regulations, and this deadline is August 19. In other words, this LUCA is required to have an effective date of August 19th or sooner. And the consequence of not having conforming regulations, conforming floodplain regulations on that effective day is that Bellevue residents and businesses would immediately lose their federally backed flood insurance. Next slide, please. So the recommended LUCA components, I'm going to turn it over to Nick to go through. Nick?
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. I will be going over the proposed amendments, as well as the public engagement strategy with this land use code amendment, and then the process and timeline. So the city's floodplain management regulations, as mentioned, are located in 2025H of the land use code. That's our critical areas ordinance. The last substantive update to our floodplain management regulations occurred in 2011. The Washington State Department of Ecology, in partnership with FEMA, published a statewide model ordinance, which includes minimum floodplain management regulations, and the ordinance takes into account the updated countywide firms, which will be effective August 19, 2020. Staff has worked closely with Ecology and FEMA to ensure that the amendments comply with the minimum standards of the model ordinance. And the draft amendments to the floodplain management regulations in Attachment A include the current regulations with new text shown in underline, and then remove text shown with the strike through. So the necessary amendments to the land use code occur in four different topic areas, and I'll briefly run through those. The first topic area relates to definitions. The definitions are revised to match terms that are now used in the Frequently Flooded Areas Development Standards section. Altogether, there are 12 new definitions and six existing definitions that will be amended for clarity and consistency with FEMA requirements. The next category is with the Building Performance or Development Standards. It's important to note that existing critical areas and shoreline management regulations work in conjunction with floodplain management regulations to require protection to critical areas, mitigation for any impacts, and then minimization of the potential for flood damage. Oftentimes, setbacks or buffer requirements will push development outside of a flood hazard area, but in the event that development must occur within a frequently flooded area, these performance standards would continue to apply, and they would require new development activities to consider environmental impacts and provide mitigation measures where necessary to develop in a responsible manner. The amendments to the performance standards require that new developments, including utilities, within frequently flooded areas be floodproofed in order to minimize risk to people and damage to property. Amendments to the section reinforce the requirements for floodproofing measures to protect natural drainage by allowing floodwaters to flow in their natural courses. The amendments also remove texts relating to legally existing development from the floodplain section specifically. The land use code does have a provision in the Critical Areas section that applies to existing legally established primary structures, and that resides in 2025H. And this would, this provision for legally established existing primary structures would apply to development in frequently flooded area. So the removal of this text is to avoid duplication and to comply with FEMA requirements. Next slide, please. The next topic area relates to the variance process. So when a project is unable to comply with certain performance standards, the city has a variance process that an applicant can take advantage of to deviate from any of the required standards. Under current code, certain development standards would be able to be modified through a critical areas land use permit, and that's the permit that's required when there is development within a frequently flooded areas. But FEMA is now requiring that a variance for any modification to the performance standards be applied for in order to grant that modification. So the amendments are going to include additional criteria that the director must consider when deciding whether to grant a variance to floodplain regulations. And the next topic area has to do with amendments to procedures. So this is the last set of amendments. They relate to our procedural requirements, including a new section that's created in the land use code for required submittal documents when developing in a frequently flooded area. Many of the submittal requirements, such as survey requirements and narratives around floodplain functions, were provided before by non-codified submittal requirements, but FEMA is requiring that these submittal requirements be codified. So a new subsection is proposed to address that requirement.
I cannot, I can't hear. I didn't, we didn't hear, at least I did not hear the last part of that.
The, I can, I can repeat that. I apologize. So the last set of amendments that we're proposing here has to, it relates to our procedural requirements. So we are creating or developing a new subsection that pertains to submittal documents. And the submittal documents would be what the director determines is necessary when reviewing development in a frequently flooded area. Many of the items that we are including in this list are required by FEMA, but they've already been implemented through our procedures. They just weren't codified. So certain requirements, such as survey requirements and narratives around floodplain functions, as an example, were required before, but we've now put that requirement in our code per FEMA's requirements. FEMA also requires the city to cite the applicable enforcement and penalty provisions for violations of the floodplain regulations. So this is included in the amendments as well as a new subsection. This amendment does not change Development Services Code compliance procedures. It just clarifies which enforcement procedures apply. So that summarizes the four topic areas. At their core, the proposed changes in these four areas ensure development in frequently flooded areas is designed to minimize and eliminate flood damage and prevent one property owner from increasing flood damage to their neighbors. The changes follow standard floodplain management practices and are consistent with federal and state requirements. And if approved, the amendments would also maintain the city's And if approved, the amendments would also maintain the city's membership in the NFIP, which will continue to allow our residents to purchase flood insurance. Next slide, please. With this um land use code amendment, we are proposing three modes of outreach. So the purpose of the public engagement is to inform the public of the new firms that will take effect on August nineteenth and to inform them of the amendments to the land use code. With these modes, we have a um process for requirements. So with that, um notification in the city's weekly permit bulletin will be provided, both for the notice of application for the land use code amendment, um as well as the CIPA notification. And then we would also provide notification of the upcoming uh public hearing. The next uh mode of outreach is a direct mailer to all properties with either a structure or a property located within an identified frequently flooded area. So um we did send out a courtesy letter to inform people of these changes, and we also provided a um link in that letter to uh the city webpage where move into our next outreach mode, which is the online presence. So so with that, we've launched a webpage as of last week, which includes our frequently asked questions. Um, we have the project status and timeline on there, as well as contact information for public comment. And we will continue to update this webpage as the Luca progresses. Next slide, please. So the Luca process, um it is a process for city council legislative action. As as Mike and Trisna mentioned earlier, the letter of final determination was issued by FEMA on February nineteenth, which started a six-month clock from the day from that day to amend our floodplain management regulations and adopt the updated forms. With that, in order to be on track for the potential adoption prior to the August nineteenth deadline, we plan to meet with the EBCC on June thirtieth to provide an overview of the land use code amendment. And then we plan to return to council for a public hearing in July and then return to the EBCC on August fourth for a public hearing to approve or disapprove the land use code amendment. And as mentioned earlier, um failing to adopt the amendments would jeopardize the city's enrollment status in the national flood insurance program. And that concludes the presentation on the proposed amendments, public engagement, and land use code process. Next slide, please.
So just a real quick, again, the recommendation is for the the city council to find uh to enter a finding of necessity and retain the processing of this Luca. Um, and obviously, that's at your discretion, um and we are here to answer any questions the council may have.
Okay, thank you very much. That was a great presentation. Um, we're gonna call on the council members in this or order, Councilmember Stokes, followed by Councilmember Robertson, Barksdale, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, Councilmembers On, Councilmember Lee, and then me. So let's start with Councilmember Stokes.
Oh, yes, thanks very much. That was a really great uh presentation. Um, I don't have anything to question about it. Um, it's something we need to do. We need to do it quickly. It sounds like it's um one of those benefits uh for having or a city to have for its uh residents to have um discounts and have a protection. Uh, so uh it's, this is a good news thing, and I'm very pleased to be ready to vote for it. Thank you.
Councilmember Robertson. Councilmember Robertson, I I can't hear you.
There, am I unmuted now? Some reason, okay, for some reason it muted. Sorry about that. Um, so I I I've realized, we just last done this in twenty eleven, so I think Councilmember Lee and I were the only ones on council since then, and um I've worked on flood regulations twice, once as a planning commissioner, commissioner of critical areas, and once as a council member, and they are not without controversy. They are not without significant impacts. So I am uh fairly vexed at the federal government pushing us to do this in such a quick manner and would like to ask staff if they will again ask for an extension because we got notice in February and then COVID hit and we could not take it up. And this is the first meeting that we can actually take it up. We're not getting really into the meat of it. This is a pretty high overview and process discussion. And I think we need to get into the meat of it, not only for the council to understand it, but also for the public to understand it. So if you'll bear with me, I have um some comments as well as some questions. Um, first is.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yeah.
Can I ask that you limit it to three minutes and then we'll we'll go continue and I'll come back to you if necessary?
Yeah, sure. Let me set my timer um so that I how long I know how long I have. Alrighty. Um, so um couple of things. One is, I think that we need to set up a website with the map and the study and the draft regulations for the public, because I don't know, I haven't seen those yet. They weren't part of our packet. I don't know if all of a sudden we're adding additional properties into the floodplain. I know it's a county map, but those people need to be notified because it could have pretty significant impacts on their ability to use their property if they want to renovate, redevelop, et cetera. So I would recommend that we get our IT people to quickly do a website uh so that we can push this information out to people. Second of all, um I don't know how many residents actually have the federal flood insurance or if they mostly have private insurance. So I don't know how big of a threat missing the deadline really, I know it sounds like a really big threat, but maybe it's not a threat if no one has the federally backed flood insurance. So um I'd like to have an understanding of that. Um, so I'd like to also have an understanding of whether the Lake Siamish floodplain is is raised based on the county's failure to manage the outflow, whether people are going to be losing more of their property as a result of the new floodplain map and having that property regulated, that they wouldn't otherwise if the county actually managed the property as they were supposed to under their agreement from the seventies with the Corps of Engineering. So I need to have an understanding of that. I also need to have an understanding of how this impacts use and redevelopment for property owners and how it impacts people's property values. If they're not able to use it as they were, if they can't replace buildings, if they have to move their um footprint, if they renovate, et cetera, that's going to impact people's property values. Um, so those are the kind of the things I want to get into as we keep this. I wish we could send it to the planning commission, but I know that as long as we don't have an extension, we really can't. Um, so process, I think council needs a study session on this. I think council members who want it, and I do, need briefing with staff. Um, and I think that we need to have that ahead of the hearing um and action for adoption because if we don't understand the impact of this, then the then I don't think the public will either. And it would also be good to really have a deep understanding of whether we can change any of this or whether we just must adopt it. So um actually, I'm still under three minutes, so I'm just gonna, staff doesn't need to respond, although the process piece of do we have time to have a session on this and get into the meat of it if we're not sending it to the planning commission? Um, and do you think that we can have a study session, briefings ahead of the public hearing? So I'm I'm at almost at three minutes, so if staff will answer that, I will yield my time after their answer. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
So Trisna, do you want to respond to the question, uh, the uh uh extension request?
Sure. Um, yes, uh, so we have been working, as Nick mentioned, we've been working really closely with both uh Department of Ecology as well as FEMA. We have asked that question multiple times to our contacts there um to kind of check again with the, as as Councilmember Robertson mentioned with the COVID um situation, it's been um, there's been some complexities and difficulties, and the the answers that we've been given is that no, there is no extension. That is uh planned or even kind of um at on the table at this point in time. So we have um been working towards just simply meeting that August nineteenth um deadline uh as we haven't been able to get any uh traction whatsoever with getting any extension from um either our um counterparts at DOE or um FEMA.
And then as far as the additional study session, uh Councilmember Robertson, we would need to work with uh with the city clerk's office to uh figure out um what the schedule looks like. But if we could fit one in to provide additional uh information to the council, certainly we're willing to do that. And briefings are certainly available as well, and we could set those up as council members a wish.
Great. I would really appreciate having both a briefing and the study session that answers all of the questions, which you'll probably have to rewind the tape to gather, but um this is more of a big deal than it seems like as far as what its potential impacts are. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next, uh, we'll have Councilmember Barksdale.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any specific questions, but as liaison to the planning commission, I would be interested in following up on Councilmember Robertson's questions about the impact on um land use code and just, you know, as well as upcoming projects. I know we have a number of affordable housing projects coming up or topics on the planning commission, just be interested in how that might affect some of the work that we're gonna be doing. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers On.
There we go. Now I'm unmuted. Uh, yes, well, thank you. I want to appreciate staff for being so responsive to make sure that we have a a process to meet the August nineteenth for the land use code adoption of these maps. Uh, because at the end of the day, we've been dealing with a lot of things with COVID and many other items. So to the degree that we can jump on this and walk through, there are a lot of edits in the land use code. Um, so I have a couple of of questions that I want to make sure I'm clear about. So do we know how many of our businesses or residents actually are using the national flood insurance? One question. The other one is, so just to confirm that uh we must adopt all of the FEMA and DOE provisions in order for the flood insurance to be able to be offered. Uh, is that correct? And then um on the procedural side, what I thought I heard is that the submittal requirements are already baked into our process, but we just need to codify. So that's only the procedural piece and not the actual meat of the land use requirements. So those were my uh my questions.
Thank you. Um, go ahead and answer. I just got a message from Charmaine that I skipped over, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, and I apologize. There's just like too many Js on my sheet. So you'll you'll go next, Deputy Mayor. Go ahead.
I am not sure how much of the information that we have, um but I will ask Trisna and Nick, if you can answer, I'm not sure if we have information on how many people have insurance or use the national flood insurance.
Or maybe that's something that you can come back to, get back to me on, because I think it does go to the question about, right, these may be surprises to folks whose properties are going to be impacted. So do we even understand what kind of a of an issue this might be? Because to the degree that the national flood insurance is helpful to our communities, then certainly this is a good thing. But if it's creating more of of concerns, we would want to understand what that is.
Right, understood. And then Councilmembers On, your other questions about do we need to adopt it all, including the submittal requirements? And and so we have been working with and handed to Nick and Trisna with the Department of Ecology and representatives from FEMA, really pushing hard to.
Mike, you're cut out there.
No, I'm sorry, push pushing really hard to make sure that what we bring forward is really the minimum requirement to maintain our eligibility for the national flood insurance program. So um what we have in front of the council in the uh proposed amendments to the land use code are really the minimums that we need to process to achieve that or maintain that compliance or uh with the requirement of the uh insurance program.
Okay, so I do think we need a study session to better understand, because I also read in there about enforcement of flood floodplain regulations, and so I have questions about is that us? Is that the state? So how does this whole thing work? So I don't want to take up time here for that. I think we will need that extra time to understand. Thank you.
Um, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks, Mike, Trisna, and Nick for the uh for the great presentation. I I think Councilmember Robertson uh brought up a number of good questions and and thoughts um around this, and my only concern is that we keep uh pushing as aggressively as possible, and it is already an aggressive timeline, but since there's no indication that we might get an extension, um, I just want to put that encouragement that we continue to 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 go forward as as much as we can and make it up through that study session or briefings or whatever else we need to do. And and given that, um, do we have a backup plan just in case um and heaven forbid, we 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 have a second wave of uh COVID nineteen and we're restricted once again on issues that we can take action on um before August nineteenth. In that scenario, would we have um any kind of recourse um or or any other type of way of addressing this if if that were to happen?
Um, uh, Trisna, do you want to try to handle that that question?
Sure. Um, so as far as we know, the the consequence is kind of what we had explained earlier is that we would, the city would lose eligibility in that insurance um program. We um, you know, did, again, this has been asked by a number of um other communities that are in the same place as as Bellevue is in terms of how to make this happen during this kind of current time. Some of the communities we have heard have elected to do this as an interim official control as as you guys, uh, as you all went through last um the month, we we are able to do that in a much more um uh quicker pace than we would in a in a regular um Luca, where we have to follow the process for procedural requirements. So um some of our counterparts, um other communities are doing that as a as that interim official control to be able to meet that um that August nineteenth dead deadline.
Okay, okay. And then just my other question on the um on the insurance, does does it only cover um, I guess, lack of a better term, natural flooding, or does it also cover uh water main breaks as well? Is that part of this Luca as well?
I think this is really just for natural occurrences. I don't know specifically. I I think uh other insurance, homeowners insurance would cover if you have a pipe that breaks in your house, or the city, obviously, through our utilities department, if it's a city facility, um would deal with claims for damage caused by um a failure of a city utility.
Great, thanks, Mike.
Okay, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Lee, I can't hear you yet, but.
Okay, I'm fine. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you much, Miss, um, Madam Mayor. Uh, I want to compliment the staff for working under such a tight timeline, especially under this COVID nineteen uh situation. But at the same time, I I really appreciate Councilmember Robertson's question. Um, you know, what kind, and also, as Deputy Mayor mentioned, uh, what what is the recourse? How can we protect the property owners? You know, if we are rushing and uh and then through this agreement that we are making. And I think that goes to the question that you mentioned, this is a effort we're doing to maintain eligibility. So I'm not sure what commitment are we making that ties the hand of the uh the property owners? Uh, if it's just a uh superficial thing that we're doing, just maintaining eligibility, I'm all for it. But if it's committing to something that may restrict our ability uh to be protected, you know, our property owners' uh ability to protect, I think we need to be a little bit more uh careful, more considerate. How, what kind of backup plan, what kind of recourse we may have? And um I know that this, you know, may be limited. I think it was asked Dennis, how many people are potentially affected? I I don't know. It's a big, big population, or it isn't. But regardless, you know, when it happens, it's a it's a great impact to the property owners. So so I think we need to have some understanding, some solution, some uh recourse uh if we are tying our hands by rushing through this, uh what's the consequence? And how can we reduce uh the the impact? I think that's the main main question. Uh, hopefully, it's just a maintaining eligibility. Maybe we are making uh going through this process without really tying our hands too much, without really uh facing the ma- negative consequence uh too significantly. Uh, so, you know, you mentioned in the beginning of the presentation. So, you know, you mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, only less than, you know, a dozen or more of the claim that has been made during the last how many years? So maybe it's maybe it's not significant, maybe it's limited. However, in the two are affected, still be significant. So I think it'd be good to to have have us understand a little bit. I don't know how much we can do about it, but at least I think we can consider. You know, what's if it's significant, what's the backup plan? What's the recourse? Thank you.
Okay, those are all great comments. And I just had a one question about the the public process because I I always get a little nervous that for whatever reason, and especially during this time, that things are so unusual, that people don't get the information that they need. So having put out all the information that you have so far, have you gotten much response for from your outreach?
Nick, Nick, do you want to handle that one?
Sure. So so far, a lot of the questions that we've received have to do with people just generally curious whether or not their parcel is in a mapped floodplain. Property owners that had map changes to their parcels were notified by the city with a letter in 2017. And they were also invited to a FEMA map revision open house in Kent, which was hosted by FEMA, and that was during the firm update process. So I've been, I guess, fielding some of those questions by by reviewing some of the firm maps and their parcel information. But really, a lot of the questions have to do with whether or not they're they're now in a mapped floodplain or if that's changed. And much of the changes to the firms were really incorporating prior letters of map amendments. Because as we mentioned earlier, the firm's effective date, the current one, is is in 1995. So there's been quite a few studies since 1995 that are now going to be incorporated in the August 19, 2020 firms. So the the public process for updating those maps has been ongoing with FEMA since they initiated this map update in 2013. So so at this point, it's the city now adopting those final maps. So property owners may have been made aware of that in 2017. If they weren't, they've they've contacted me so far with those types of questions. That's what I've been hearing at least.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the property owners that are in within the mapped area are getting, you know, the the information that they need to comment on this and weigh in on the process. So anything we can do to make sure that happens, I think, would be helpful. Okay, so we've heard the presentation. We've given a lot of comments and gotten answers to our questions. I'm trying to kind of test the polls for if we can ask staff to move this forward toward a public hearing. So I'm going to go through the council again in the same order, except I'll put Deputy Mayor where you're supposed to be, and see if we are comfortable with option one. So it's it's not a vote. I'm just getting a sense since I can't see you. So Councilmember Stokes, are you comfortable with directing staff to get ready for the public hearing?
Absolutely. I think staff's done a great job, and I don't think we need to do staff work. And it's either we have the insurance or we don't. And I just think we need to move forward, so I'm ready.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Robertson.
I'm okay to move forward so long as we can have. Oh, shoot. Why do I? Does someone keep muting me? I'm unmuted. Can you hear me? Okay, because I thought someone else was in the control room. Anyway, thank you. Charmaine, wake up. Anyway, I'm I'm fine to move forward. I would like to strongly or just to have a study session on this before we have the public hearing. So two meetings on it. We can take action the night of the public hearing, assuming that we have all our questions answered in the study session.
Staff, is it is it possible to insert an a study session?
We can certainly bring back additional information in response to the questions that we've heard tonight. I would have to ask the city manager's office and the city clerk whether or not we've got space on your upcoming agendas to do that. I bet we certainly could prepare for that.
City Manager.
Mr. Miaki, can you weigh in if you think that we could insert a study session on our calendar?
Sure. I, like, as Mike mentioned, I I need to touch base with the city clerk's office to see if we can find space on the calendar between now and in within July before this comes back. And we'll certainly do that.
And at the very, okay, and at the very least, we can have staff briefings on this. So Councilmember Barksdale.
I'm comfortable with proceeding with option one.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Noonhouse.
Yes, happy to move forward with option one.
Thank you. Councilmembers on.
Option one is fine.
Councilmember Lee.
We have to do this, so I'm all for it. And I think it would be important to consider what you suggested, making sure we know who are affected, how they're going to be affected, and what some of the negative impacts, and if we have some ways to mitigate that. And but that can be done like you suggested, you know, through a briefing or something to be adequate. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that sounds good. So it sounds like we're going to move forward with option one and get as much information as we can through staff briefings and then hopefully another study session. Thank you for that, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is the transportation impact fee program. Mr. Miaki.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. This next item in front of you is where staff are seeking direction to prepare an amendment to the city's code as it relates to the transportation impact fee program. And the purpose of the amendments are to really reduce the temporary financial burden on developers as well as reduce the administrative burden on city staff. Tonight, we are looking for direction to bring this back at a future meeting, depending on direction from the, depending on comments we hear from the council this evening. With that, I'm going to go over, I have to turn it over to Andrew Singalakis, the Director of the Transportation Department. Andrew?
Thank you, City Manager Miaki, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, and members of the city council. Joining me tonight is Eric Miller, the Implementation Planning Manager, and Molly Johnson, the Development Review Manager with the Transportation Department. In April and May, staff individually briefed all the members of the city council about this topic. Tonight, we will be discussing housekeeping changes in transportation impact fee ordinance. These changes are intended to align the ordinance with current practices. No changes in the rates are proposed at this time. Tonight, we'll go through the presentation and receive feedback. After that, we'll bring the ordinance back to a regular meeting of the council for adoption. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Eric Miller.
Good evening, council. Can can I, am I, can I be heard?
Yes, good evening.
Thank you. Thank you. And this slide was covered by both the mayor and the director Singalakis. So next slide, please. At a high clip, this this is, we're not here to talk about any kind of a major overhaul to the city's transportation impact fee program. We are only really minor adjustments. We are proposing to allow deferred fee payment for two development types, and we'll talk about those specifics. And and the rest, we really would classify as more of the housekeeping or clarifications to some of the code's definitions and references between plan plans that the city has adopted. Next slide, please. Here's our, obviously, very circular project process timeline. And while we have been developing our list of proposed amendments to this code section for well over a year now, really, the formal process internally, we kicked off in January. We did hold briefings with each of you council members in May, in April and May. And we have been going through our stakeholder outreach process. Back in May, we did hold a briefing with the Chamber of Commerce and their permitting and land use committee. We invited all permittees within the city for commercial and and major multifamily residential developments over the last three years and and held a briefing remotely, of course, with those folks. And and we happen to have a a presentation with the Bellevue Town Town Association or one of their committees actually tomorrow. And so far, we have had absolutely no specific opposition to these code amendments. There have been a few clarifying questions that we've been able to answer and are understanding satisfactorily. Next slide, please. There we go. This and the next slide, we will really kind of, this is kind of the meat of the proposal, and we'll, I will jump in on the first of these impact fee or improvement processes. And then I will pass it off to to Molly, and she will return it to me for the wrap up. But the first bullet here, the sub-bullet, apply refund and reimbursement cap, really refers to the fact that our current code currently requires a reimbursement of the of a percentage of the value of land that's dedicated to the city or construction that a developer conducts. But both of these really only apply to an impact fee project, which I'll mention a little bit more about this later. But those are the roadway capacity projects that are specified as impact fee projects within the city's transportation facilities plan. The current code requires this. This is requirement is not a requirement of state law in the in the revised Code of Washington. And in our research on this topic, no other city in the state reimburses beyond the value of the fee. So that's what the cap refers to, is we would cap the refund or the credit to a development at the amount of the impact fee they owe and not go beyond that to to pay them back. And this is something that's typical of all development within the city. If there, if a development is required to dedicate for frontage improvements or construct those frontage improvements, they are they are not given any tour, any reimbursement from the city. This only applies, again, if it's an impact fee project, and that's that's the proposed change. And we'll we'll stop for questions at the end, so I'm going to pass that to to Molly at this point for the next couple of bullets.
Thanks, Eric. I'm going to talk about a couple of changes that we're proposing to the timing of fee collections. The code requires all fees to be collected at the time of building permit issuance. And one thing that we have noticed is when we have these kind of large mixed-use projects that have small tenant spaces, usually on the ground floor, that we have to collect the fees right when the the project is starting construction. However, usually, the tenants haven't been picked, and we don't know exactly what the uses are going to be for a year, maybe even two years after that. So we're guessing what the tenants will be and holding on to money. And then we get into where sometimes we have to collect extra money, depending on what the tenant is, or we have to give a refund. So that that process doesn't work very well. The reason we do that is because the tenant improvement permits current in the current code are subject to a separate provision that requires them to have CIPA in order for us to collect on tenant improvements. And so what we are proposing to do is to remove the CIPA requirement and then to allow tenant improvements to be the fees to be collected with the tenant improvement building permit as opposed to the larger shell and core building permit. And the second change we want to make to fee collection is for affordable housing developments. Affordable housing units, either individual units or full developments, are eligible for an exemption. However, in order to receive the exemption, then we need to complete some paperwork that doesn't get done until towards the end of close to when the units are ready for occupancy. So what we would like to change here is to allow, if the paperwork is submitted and executed, is to allow us to then defer these fees to give till the certificate of occupancy to give the applicant time to complete the paperwork and record the paperwork. Otherwise, what we end up doing is we take the money for the affordable housing developments or units, we hold on to it, and then we refund it, which doesn't make a lot of sense. So this makes more sense both for the city and for the applicant. We aren't holding on to their money when we're going to give it back anyway. And then after we go to the next slide, Eric will do the, no, I will do the next one. So one thing we noticed as we're going through the the code provisions is that even though we give an existing use credit, the code doesn't actually state that credit is given for existing use. So that's something that we need to go ahead and put into the code because that's the way we do the process. The fees are collected on net new trips. Because we update our modeling every couple of years, the new trips are trips that are in the system within about two years of when we look at the the uses. So there's a, we have also included a limit that the use needs to be in place within two years of when the land use application comes in. This is one that we did get a question on. You know, sometimes the land use applications can take a year or more to approve, and people are concerned that they wouldn't be vested. But this would actually vest the use at the time of the application, not the time of the approval. The other thing we wanted to clarify was kind of how fees are calculated. Because we have a prescriptive system right now. It states that the first thing we do is look for another fee that's similar, that's on the list. That's not really consistent with the standard methodology used in trip generation development. So we want to change that instead to looking at the IT Trip Generation Manual or other accepted methodology. Eric, you want to do the next one?
Thank you, Molly. Yeah, no, we're really into the the clarification section, and there's numerous definitions in the impact fee code and and references to other plans. For example, the the state law and and our code indicates that the transportation impact fee program is based upon the capital facilities plan, which is an element of our comprehensive plan. So we're just trying to clarify with this amendment that in our capital facility plan, it adopts by reference the transportation facilities plan. And and furthermore, that that transportation facilities plan is, has numerous projects, many of which are not impact fee projects. But we're just trying to clarify that those projects that are the basis for the transportation impact fee program are specifically designated within the transportation facilities plan for that for that purpose. You know, all of these are outlined in your packet with the code red lines. And the the final point before we jump to the next steps and and to have you ask any questions you have was that there's a list of exemptions in the current impact fee code. That includes things like affordable housing, like was mentioned, transport, public transportation facilities, public schools, for example, are exempt from paying impact fees. But one thing that isn't currently exempted are city facilities. And it points to the new fire station there. And that's that's kind of for obvious reasons that we didn't think it appropriate, the city should pay an impact fee to itself. So we wanted to to add city facilities to that existing list of exemptions. Next slide, please. Mentioned that we are continuing our outreach with a with a Bellevue Downtown Association Committee tomorrow. We've been working with staff at the BDA for some time to get this scheduled, and this didn't work out until unfortunately, right after the the council study session tonight. Staff, we will be certain to relay any any significant messaging that we hear from the BDA back to council after that briefing tomorrow. We would come back at council direction for the review and adoption of the code amendments, and and tentatively, those could be effective, for example, on September 1st. Next slide, please. And just to recap, the direction and we're seeking is to have staff come back with the with an ordinance to to put these amendments into the into the code. And I think the last slide is really just kind of a recap of the topics that can be up on the screen in case there's a council member questions. that can be up on the screen in case there's a council member questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. I think that's the end of the presentation, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll allow comment and questions in this quarter. We'll go with Councilmember Lee, Zahn, Robertson, Barksdale, Stokes, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, and then myself. So starting with Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I have a question regarding applying refund and reimbursement cap. Can you describe what do we do now? I'm a little bit not sure. What do we do now? How do we apply refund and reimbursement?
Sure, and this is actually fairly rare. We've looked back approximately over the last 10 years, and there's only been two examples of where this has occurred. But for example, and I'll use the big example that we've had fairly recently, was that a development, namely the Spring District, was conditioned to dedicate the right-of-way for Spring Boulevard to the city. Now, the Impact Fee Code requires that... And because Spring Boulevard is also an impact fee project designated in the Transportation Facilities Plan, the current Impact Fee Code requires that both that after the amount of the fee that they owe is refunded or credited back to the developer, that the city has to additionally pay a proportion of the value of that right-of-way dedication back to the developer. And again, if this was not an impact fee project, but the developer was required to make this dedication, and there would be no required reimbursement. So it really only applies when it's a development adjacent to or around an impact fee project. Does that help answer the question?
What value are you talking about? So in addition to paying back the impact fee they pay, we actually have to give them a sum of reflecting the value?
The value of the right-of-way, in that case.
I see. But where's that money coming from? The city has to come up with that money.
The city has to come up with it from the Transportation Impact Fee Program or Impact Fee Fund.
Okay, I see. Not specifically from the developer, but it's from the general fund. I see. So they actually get... They will actually be getting back more than what they actually pay in impact fee.
Right. That's the issue right there.
So how... Yeah, so how... So the value can be... Is determined differently, separately, right? That could be billions of dollars. We can go bankrupt.
It doesn't happen very often, but...
I understand that, but I'm serious. That doesn't seem to make sense. So I... Yeah, I understand. Thank you very much. Okay.
All right, Councilmembers on.
Yes, thank you. I really appreciate the continued outreach to understand the nuances and those details and really the unintended consequences of some of our codes and how they all fit together. So from reading the list, it looks like these are mostly housekeeping items of our code cleanup to remove inefficiencies and streamline process. And I did hear directly from Imagine Housing some of the concerns they had about collecting upfront fees and then getting refunded because of their own paperwork process. So I appreciate that. Separating the corn shell from the TI, I think, makes a lot of sense as well. My question is this. When you were talking about, you know, clarifying definitions when vesting happens, are we expecting that these changes will actually reduce the time to deliver on these development projects?
Actually, they shouldn't make much difference in the time to deliver. It will make it easier, and there's fewer steps. So it'll be... It'll impact the time to deliver the impact fee notification and get the fees posted. And it'll save time at the end if we're not doing refunds and recalculations.
Okay, so more of the administrative function of our own piece than anything the folks outside of City Hall might see. So then, it's our own internal efficiencies of our own staff, not having to do all this administrative. And then, it's more of than development not having to really front upfront fees, which then has to be refunded at the end. I was just trying to understand that.
Yeah, it'll save them a little bit of process, too, but it'll probably save us more.
Okay. Well, saving us process is also good, because that's resources we could be doing something else with. So I appreciate rooting out these items and working on getting these cleared up. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Robertson.
Hello? Thank you. Yeah, no, I think these are great. I am very, very supportive of this. These are generally a win for the developer and for affordable housing. The only... Because of the timing considerations, et cetera. It's also a win for the city if we don't have to hold money that we're ultimately giving back, because there's an administrative cost to holding it and paying the interest back, et cetera. So if these were in order, ready to adopt tonight, I'd be ready to adopt them. And I would say that on the impact fee credit, I actually raised that because in my day job, we had a developer say, "Are you going to cut us a check for the overage?" Bellevue does. Not knowing that I was related, I said, "What? Bellevue does? No one does that." So I'm really glad that we're bringing ourselves into line where we're not having to cut checks to developers for doing projects that are necessary for their development. I think that that's very appropriate. And the wins for developers in this are more than offset that remote issue, which won't apply to most people, anyway. So my question is only whether the council would like to see this come back on consent, because I am very happy to have this just come back on consent.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Barksdale.
Thank you for the presentation. I don't have any questions, just thankful for finding the optimizations and reaching out to the community and stakeholders to make sure that this was a win-win. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues. I think I don't... I hope we're not going to have billions and billions of fees. But I think the questions or comments have been answered, and I'm ready to vote it on consent as well. Good job. This is really, really thorough and very much appreciated.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Noonhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, great job, great presentation for all the reasons already mentioned by my colleagues. You know, unless we hear any other substantial stakeholder feedback, as mentioned about the BDA, for example, happy to move this forward and get this on a regular session and move this legislation forward.
Thank you, and I concur with my fellow councilmembers and Councilmember Robertson, consent calendar would be fine with me if we don't have any, you know, feedback that would say otherwise from the stakeholders, the BDA. So I think it sounds like we're all comfortable to return to a regular session to address this. And so that will be the direction from tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are down to ratifying a resolution. And this was, I think, the last curfew that we needed to enact. And that curfew was enacted due to available intelligence that there was a credible threat to Bellevue at that time for violence. And it was enacted knowing that we could terminate it at any time when that threat was gone. And indeed, although we voted in a three-day curfew, we were able to terminate it after one day, because there was no longer a credible threat. So this is an opportunity to ratify Resolution 9766. And I am going to assume that everybody's comfortable with just ratifying this. But I don't... I hate to make any assumptions. So maybe we could open the mic, and if anybody has a problem with ratifying this or a comment or question, feel free to speak up right now. And then, hearing none, I will ask for a motion from our deputy mayor.
Happy to do so. I move to adopt Resolution 9766 ratifying and confirming the Fourth Civil Emergency Order imposing curfew of June 3, 2020, and termination of Fourth Civil Emergency Order imposing curfew of June 4, 2020.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes. So that is the end of this council meeting. I want to thank you all for your participation and your thoughtful comments and questions. And I think I will hear you next week. Council meeting adjourned.